Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, at this time, April, I'm trying to remember legal counsel, I'm trying to remember, should we go ahead and discuss those water minutes, or should that be reserved for a committee? I can't remember what we decided on that.
I think that would be up to the general policy of the council. If you wanted to weigh into a committee meeting, you could certainly do that.
Perfect, thank you. All right. And I know most boards, they approve their minutes when they have those meetings, so...
Most committees, it's a committee, it is not a board.
Committees, boards, I'm using the words interchangeably, I understand your frustration with it, so I apologize. To clarify my language, the Water Committee will wait for those minutes, for that committee to be approved at that next committee meeting. Okay. I know they were included with our packet, so I just wanted to address that. We find ourselves at our next agenda item, which is the approval for the current bills. If someone could take us through that.
I've got a quick question on that first, if I might.
Sure.
We have, again, a dispersment for a Cork Hill Company LLC, made a dispersment back in April, and now another one this month under Legal Services. Is that, is that something that's sunsetting, or what is, what is that scenario?
Cork was the previous city auditor.
Yes, sir.
And since we've switched to a new auditor, they constantly have to get with them to be able to retrieve information from the old audit, their working papers, to be able to move forward with doing their audit. That's where the cost is for them obtaining that information from the previous auditor.
Thank you, sir. So as we move forward with them, it will sunset the...
That should be it.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And with that said, I'll make a motion to approve the bills of $155,971.50.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we find ourselves looking for any professional or consultant reports this evening? Okay, I see no hands. Next item would be our mayor's report, announcement or special guest. Sir?
Thank you, Council President. I do have several different announcements, but before I begin, I want to officially introduce Ms. Ludelia Jackson as the City Clerk for the City of Irondale. She started with us on May 10th, and so far, she's been doing a fantastic job. Everybody is glad to have her to be a part of the team, especially Frank Pennington.[1487.62][1487.62](Laughter). But I just wanted to welcome Lou to the City of Irondale family, and also wanted you all to have an opportunity to know, before we move with the rest of our meeting tonight, why Frank is not sitting there, and we call her Lou for short, why she's in that particular seat. So Lou, we're just glad to have you here with the City of Irondale, and we're looking forward with you being with us for quite a long time. Also, before I get into my report, I'm going to turn it over to a group that started out of having a desire to want to see Blueprint Irondale move throughout the City of Irondale. Wasn't anything that I had anything to do. They created their own image, they decided how they want to do a canvas blast in the neighborhood on May the 22nd. One of the things that I've learned as a leader, sometimes you just need to stay out of the way and let people do exactly what they do. So I'm going to allow them to come to the front and to share some words with the audience, and also Ms. Marsha Kelly has a presentation that she wants to make to the Public Works Department.
Everyone, I'm one of the Blueprint Irondale volunteers, and I'm joined by everyone else, all the other fine people in the room, in these very brightly colored yellow t-shirts, and thank you, Counselor Wilson, for supporting yours as well. We just wanted to give you an update on kind of what our plans are for this weekend, because we are going to be out and about in all the neighborhoods. So we're going to start at 10:00 a.m. this Saturday, and try to reach as many neighborhoods as we possibly can, knowing that we're probably not going to get to every single household, but we have a pretty simple mission, and that is to make sure that everyone is at least aware of the update to the comprehensive plan. And if they have technology barriers and cannot fill it out online, we're going to give them a physical copy of the survey that they can fill out in return, either to City Hall, or they can put it back in the bag, and there's a phone number on the cover letter that they can text their address to, and then a volunteer will come back by and pick it up. So we're trying to make it as easy as possible, so we can get as many opinions and voices heard throughout this process. And I also wanted to share that we're taking COVID-19 precautions, so we're going to be wearing masks as we approach homes, we're going to be sanitizing in between homes, we're going to try to keep our distance from residents, but we do think it's really important, because we recognize that not everyone is on Facebook, and may not be aware of the process, we want to get to as many houses as we possibly can. And I just want to thank Mayor Stewart, we're really doing this because of the goal that you set, and you set the bar so high that we, after some discussions, recognized that we couldn't, this isn't possible unless we come together and make a concerted effort to get a thousand surveys. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you to the council for allowing this update to continue. And I also want to thank all of the other volunteers who are going to be out on Saturday at 10:00 a.m., knocking on lots of doors. And with that, Marsha is going to present our basket. I'll grab it for you, yes?
Good evening. Mayor Stewart, Councilwoman at Irondale Neighbors, this is National Public Works Week, and you guys know we got a new holiday every time, but we would like to show our appreciation for the Public Works Department, and all of the good work that they do, and the work we plan for them to continue doing. (Laughter). Is there somebody that would be eager to...
Frank.
Right? Can I hold him?
Well deserved.
Well deserved.
Thank you all for your, thank you very much for making it all.
You, you deserve it.
I'm just in the way, man.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hey, before all you guys leave, can y'all just turn towards me so we can get a picture? I think it's a, it's a great event, great thing that y'all are doing, if you don't mind. Now, y'all can have the movies. One, two, and three. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you all so much, and I really appreciate your help. It says it takes a village, and that is really true. So we're looking forward to being able to reach our goal. We only have 12 days to be able to hit the goal by May 31st.
We only have 12 days to be able to hit the goal by May 31st. That is our plan, to be able to cut off the campaign at that time. Not only are they doing a blast on the 22nd, but probably the week of the 24th, we will also have a phone bank that will be calling everybody throughout the community for a week as well. So we truly believe that we're going to be able to hit the goal. Words of wisdom says that, you know, you set a goal that's so large, that it's doomed to fail unless God's a part of it, and we will just see how God is a part of making sure that everybody in the City of Irondale gets an opportunity to participate. I did not just choose the number 1,000, but the number 1,000 represents a great statistical analysis when you're trying to extract information to be able to determine what a population of 13,000 would like to have. So that really came out of my stats program when I was studying, working on my MPA, to know how to be able to use stats, to be able to gather information, to be able to project what a whole community would like to have over a 20-year period. Also, I would like to thank the council for allowing me to be able to distribute $100,000 to the schools in the City of Irondale, the principals at Shades Valley High School, Irondale Middle School, Grantswood, and Irondale Community. Would just like to thank you for your support, and for us to be able to provide them with that support during this upcoming year. We also had the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on May 6, 2021. It was the first breakfast that we had here, or the first Mayor's Prayer Breakfast that we had here in the City of Irondale. The prayer breakfast sold out within two days, so there were a lot of people that was interested in being able to participate. And one of the biggest things that came out of the prayer breakfast, that we were able to give two $1,000 scholarships to students at Shades Valley High School. Ms. Jennifer Rivera, she's going to Sanford, and Mr. Michael Burrow is going to the University of Alabama. So we had an opportunity to be able to invest into some young people, and to be able to help them with their educational pursuits. Also, out of that prayer breakfast, the, one of the employees, Jared Morris, came up with an idea that the employees would pray at the beginning of the week at the flagpole. Wasn't anything that I had to do with that idea, but we've done that twice. Jared led the first one, Greg led the second one, and I think Josh is going to be able to lead the third one. Also, we have EWTN has agreed to host the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast June 17th at 9:00 a.m. at their facility. Brookview Wesleyan is going to host in July, and Church of the Highlands is going to host a prayer meeting, or the Mayor's Prayer Meeting, in the month of August. So our religious community is really getting behind us and supporting us as we move the city forward. Police Week was the 9th through the 15th, and I would just like to congratulate Jason Wiggins on his 30 years of service in the police office. Would you all give Jason a, give him a hand clap? I don't know how he's been able to do it for 30 years, but he says he's going to hang around with it for a few more years. Also, as you just saw Frank Pennington receive the basket for Public Works. Public Works Week is the 16th through the 22nd. Frank also just hit his mark of having 20 years of service with the City of Irondale. And we are also providing lunch to all of the Public Works workers tomorrow at 12:30 to be able to celebrate them here in the shop, and just let them know how much we appreciate them, and how much we care about them, and we want to let them know that the work that they do is appreciated by the community. The food box giveaway is coming back this Saturday on March 22nd, 2021, so if you know anybody that is in need of food, we will be out in front of City Hall at 9 o'clock, providing food to the citizens. We will have over 200 boxes, and we're really looking forward to being able to do that as well. I know individuals have been asking about Roughenor Park and what's going on at Roughenor Park. If you want to know what's going on at the park, you can be here next Tuesday on the 25th. We're actually opening bids on the 25th for the work to begin at Roughenor Park, and that's at 2 o'clock, and it will be held here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report. Council President, thank you for giving me this time.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir, for your report. Now we find ourselves looking for any department head reports. I know we have a few in the room. Do we have any reports from any department heads?
Chief, you good?
All right. Thank you very much, moving on. Now, we're looking for any council members, or standing committees, or any special committee reports. Councilman London, we'll start with you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, good evening to everyone. I just have a, just one thing, a couple of things. First, just talk about the Exchange Club meeting on next Tuesday, May the 25th, at 5:30. They'll be celebrating 35 years of service in the City of Irondale, and they'll meet at Jubilee Ministry on First Avenue, which is just right behind the police station there, and they will be serving boxed lunches from Marty's. So come out on next Tuesday, May the 25th, at 5:30. You can have the bids, and then go over there and get your boxed lunch, and enjoy celebrating 35 years of Exchange Club service in Irondale. And if you need to contact anyone, contact Linda Shone at 205-901-1255. And then also, on the, Ms. Lou, here's your first thing from, first thing from Councilman London, I want to have a park committee meeting on May the 26th at 5:30 p.m. I just want to make sure that all the council are available that day, on the 26th at 5:30, that's next Wednesday.
Does that conclude your report?
You're good, you're good with that?
Okay.
And what we're going to be talking about on that, Mayor's going to be talking about the park on that, on that Tuesday, but this one is a very important meeting, and it's not, really not talking about parks, but it's dealing with, with children. Councilman Quaylar was, was at school talking to a professor there, and come to find out, the lady was the wife of a former player of mine, many, many years ago, almost 20-something years ago, who I have a great relationship with, his family and him, and his name is Sam Donnell. And, and the meeting was, is going to be next Tuesday, Wednesday, about Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club. They are interested in bringing a Boys and Girls Club to Irondale, and so we're having a meeting on next Wednesday for anyone who's interested in that. Right now, they got almost 2,500 kids across the county that they serve, about 1,280 men, a thousand, over 1,000 girls that they serve, from the ages about six all the way up. So we're excited that they are, they're really looking at Irondale to be the next spot to have a Boys and Girls Club, and I think there's a need when we talk about our young folks, and so we're excited about Sam coming in next, on next Wednesday to present, and all the questions that you may have. We can't answer all those questions, but Sam really, really has it, has it going, and so we're excited that he has, is going to come in and talk with us on next Wednesday about a Boys and Girls Club. And Senator, you got anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, and one of the things that really impressed me about the Boys and Girls Club is, when I sat down with the teachers, the teachers were saying, if we could have something like the Boys and Girls Club that could support our efforts in trying to raise the test scores in our schools, they provide mentorship, and they provide tutoring that can help our students in Irondale. And it was, it was, for me, I saw it as a win for Irondale, because we need to be supportive of our students in the best way that we can, and I felt this is something that we can, we can certainly try to work on, and have it become a reality here in Irondale, because there is a need for that.
You know, and it's, this, what jumped out to me is just the, that's the relationship that I build with this young man in the athletic field. That's why I love athletics so much, is the relationship that you build, that not only lasts on the court, but they, they last a lifetime. And when they find, when they made that connection, the first person they asked was, hey, you know Coach London? Yes, you know, they all about know Coach London. So, you know, just in part of our, how we, when I talk about our young folks, that's why I'm so passionate about celebrating our young people, about supporting our young people at our schools, and this guy didn't go to Shades Valley, that's the thing about it, he went to Mountain Brook High School, and I coached him a long, long time ago, in, when he was a freshman in high school. And so just the building that relationship with him has lasted all of this year, and so it's important, and that we continue to build this relationship with our, with our young people at our schools, and not just our schools, but the surrounding, surrounding schools also. And my last one is that on June the 15th through the 17th, Shades Valley High School will be having a baseball youth camp, baseball youth camp on June the 15th and 17th, and the head coach is Craig Lehman, and so you can contact him at Shades Valley High School for this summer baseball camp. Thank you, President.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Quaylar, your report?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here. I'd like to report that this past Friday, I had the privilege of attending the Alabama League of Municipalities Convention. Councilman Box was there, as well as our mayor, Mayor Stewart, and the Friday session is the one that I was able to make, and I sat in on three sessions, and the first one, I think many of you are going to like to hear about, and that is bringing a fiber broadband provider to our city. Now, I've seen posts on Facebook, and Nextdoor, and so on, and there is a need for broadband. It's very limited in what, what the availability here in Irondale, because there's only one provider right now. And so this session had to do with municipalities being aware that, that you're going to be approached by companies seeking new franchise agreements, or seeking to renew their agreements that contain terms that are not favorable to local governments. And this focused on broadband availability, and the percentages, they cited some percentages of states and where they're at with broadband availability. Georgia is sitting at 47.4 percent. You have Mississippi at 45.3 percent, and Tennessee with 43.6 percent, Florida at 38 percent, and Alabama is trailing with 28.9 percent. So we have a lot of catching up to do. And what I liked about the presentation was this fact that most people will want to know about, they see a need in Alabama, and the opportunities to provide the service to several municipalities in Alabama. So what are the key factors that they look for when they're deciding when they're going to approach a municipality? And that is, what is the demand? What is the density of homes and businesses in the community? And what is the distance from fiber? That is, the lines need to be accessible. For instance, if I have a low distance from fiber, this is good. I don't need a high demand. So it's basically a balancing of all three factors. And last thing that was important was fiber optic cables last for approximately 30 years. And what they stressed was that municipalities, such as Irondale, companies can't be using your right of ways without your consent, and without compensating you for that. And so that's where the franchise agreement's very important. And they had a gentleman there that works throughout, that's a part of the Alabama League of Municipalities, and many, including, said many city attorneys contact them to make sure that they're going to get the best deal that they can for the municipality that they represent. So I was very impressed with the presentation, and I hope that we'll be able to move forward with that, especially with the next update that I'm giving you on federal money that is coming to municipalities. We received an update, this was the second session, and part of that money, we will be able to use for broadband. We basically have free leadway, there are guidelines, but they really open it to where a municipality that is needing to do something like broadband, or it's water sanitation, that you will have the ability to do that. For areas in your infrastructure, water, sewer, improving access to clean drinking water, vital wastewater, stormwater infrastructure, expanding the access to broadband internet, you'll be able to use some of the funds for that. So that was a very good session. There's a lot of information there. Lou, you're going to be busy, because they have calculations that, that we'll need to do in order to tap into these funds, but these funds, according to the presentation, the gentleman should be coming up very soon, very soon. So they recommended getting with our municipal attorney for the best uses when planning how to utilize these funds. So April and Lou, you're going to be busy, and this is wonderful, because we have two very outstanding women that can help us, and we have our mayor that can work, and we can really do some good things with this, with the funding that we're going to be receiving. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Box?
Well, thank you, sir. I just want to thank everybody for coming again. What a great turnout we're seeing tonight, that's amazing. Great learning experience going to the League of Municipalities meeting. I got to attend several instructional courses, I guess I would call them there. Councilwoman Quaylar covered one of the most interesting, and then we also had one about the infrastructure bill, which was enlightening in several terms, which I think she's mentioned it, but it's worth mentioning again, money for our water department, our water board, or however we want to use that terminology, for replacing some of the existing pipe, just basically helping us fund what we already have, are funded to do. So anytime we can get, have more money, let's jump on board and get it, and make more improvements that we can. Attended some classes with the mayor on bond, bond refinancing and bond structuring, that was educational to me. It's amazing to me, the difference, I think I've said it before several times, but it's amazing to me, the difference in running a business and then running the business of the city, it's continued learning curve, so it's, I, I hope to do it, to do it justice as I try to be a servant here. Just a quick note, I have a person helping me develop a pathway to do a newsletter for District Four, so if, if people would like to start sending me their emails to my city email at rbox@cityofirondaleal.gov, so I can build an email database for that, it will be primarily for District Four, but once again, all citizens are welcome to engage me and comment with me as well. So from that point, I'll pass it to you, President Swabe.
All right, sir, thank you very much, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. I'll make mine real quick. First, I would like to commend Mr. Pennington and Chief Wiggins. You know, I just can't say enough about you guys. I've been here over 15 years, really, including the Parks Committee that I served on, and I'm telling you, y'all guys have been the same from day one since I've been here, and I can honestly say that y'all are some outstanding gentlemen, so I appreciate what y'all do, and y'all do a good job. Second, Mayor, if you would, and also the council, I brought this up before, but can you, can we really look into the resurfacing of the walking track at Beacon? I know we got a project going on at, at Roughenor, but Beacon really, we, we don't want that to go down, because that, that particular park is really frequented a lot. So if we can, again, I don't know how we can incorporate it, or we can look at it on a separate project, capital project, but we really need to kind of look into that. I've gotten some, a lot of comments about resurfacing that particular area, if you would. Thank you so much. Another thing, Mayor, and I will send you the information on it, but I did a drive-by, of course, like I always do on Sundays, 5228 Cornell Drive, this particular home really needs some attention. The home looks vacant, grass is grown to where you can't even cut it with a, with a lime, or you're going to have to have a swing blade in order to either get the grass down to where it needs to be. So I will send you the information, if you don't mind, if you could have someone in your department look into that, that's 5228 Cornell Drive. Next, I would like to just mention to the council, I know this may come up a little bit later, but to please take into consideration the concerns of citizens of the Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association when selecting a replacement for District Five. These citizens are very passionate about the well-being and the state of, of the Holiday Gardens neighborhood, so, you know, if, if you really could, just, just really take their concerns into consideration, because it's very important, I think. Even myself, having served here for the past 14 years, I would not be here if it wasn't for those citizens in the Holiday Garden, and even others outside of Holiday Gardens, because I, you know, I get a lot of... because I, you know, I get a lot of, you know, comments, even from people who's not in Holiday Gardens, and that's very encouraging. But they have really been a big supporter of mine for the past 14 years, and I just really appreciate that. No matter what has gone on during my tenure here, the people in my district have always supported me, and I really appreciate that. I want to say that in public, because I wouldn't be here without them. Next, you know, they always say, give people their flowers while they're living. I want to commend Councilman London. I know we fuss and fight all the time like brothers, but I want to make it public that Councilman London has been advocating for our city for quite some time. He's been really persistent with being the leader of our Parks Committee, and he had met with, you know, coaches in our neighborhoods, at our schools, he had met with some of the movers and shakers of these basketball tournaments, you know, these big tournaments that come in the city, some soccer coaches, I mean, some soccer directors. He's really pushing our city, not saying he has not always, since he has served, but he has really gone out of his way, that, you know, me looking at it from a distance, to make sure Irondale is on the map when it comes to bringing those big tournaments into the city. And when you bring those tournaments, you're bringing families, you're bringing money, you're just bringing a real good vibe, real good family atmosphere, when you start, you know, bringing those kind of tournaments that's going to generate revenue for the City of Irondale. So I just want to commend Councilman London, because I know from afar what he's been doing. I sit back and I just look and observe, so Councilman London, keep up the good work. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. As far as my report for the evening goes, I've received a lot of questions and concerns about some of the debris in Roebuck Plaza and everything. I just want to just state it out here publicly. I'm not going to go into the 50 questions that I've received here now at this point, but just know that I committed to having a meeting with the mayor today, and all the questions that were sent to me over the past two weeks will be getting answered directly to the people that asked them. So just want to let you guys know that I did get those questions, I took them to heart, and I've received some answers. Might have to ask some feedback and some dialogue to unpack those questions a little bit more, but we've got a path forward on some of the concerns brought to me over the past two weeks. That being said, that concludes my report.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
One more statement, I almost forgot. I always tell people I'm over 50, so I do forget things sometimes. Mayor Stewart, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I know you're having a business town hall meeting sometime soon. I don't know the date, though, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, our citizens was aware.
It's tomorrow at 8:00 at the AGC Building.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. You're good. All right, that being said, now we come into, we've got past our council reports, now we're looking for any reports of board or non-council committees. Do we have any reports from those groups? Okay. Now we come down to the council deliberation on agenda items only. On our agenda, there is a Section 11 there that states public hearings, but I think that's just the format. We do not have any public hearings this evening, so there's no item number 11. That being said, as far as the deliberation or consideration on agenda items, we've got four different items on the docket tonight. We've got one item under old business, which would be Ordinance 2021-10, that raises the superintendent's, the water superintendent's salary to $30,000 a year. We had our initial reading of that two weeks ago, so that will be up for consideration again this evening. Under new business, as far as the agenda is concerned, we had Resolution 2021-R43. I believe that I've received some feedback on that to withdraw that, but we'll discuss it more. Item number two under new business would be Resolution 2021-R44, that agrees to extend time for appeal of demolition, demolition order by the city council on the Siesta Motel. So that will, that's on the agenda this evening. And then finally, item number three under new business would be 2021-R45, that declares that certain public property is not needed for public or municipal purposes, and directs the disposal of said property. And that's coming from Chief Wiggins from the Police Department. So that being said, let's start with old business first. I know we went over this two weeks ago, but I'd like to see if there were any further questions. Councilman London, I'd like to start on your end.
No questions, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Quayle?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Box?
I'm clear on it.
Outstanding. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, just real quick, since my name is under the old business, I just want to make it clear that, you know, I get little comments from Facebook, y'all know how I feel about Facebook, I can't stand it. But I get little comments that comes back to me. Let's just make it clear. I appreciate Councilor Box. Now, Councilor Box, we talked about this several, several months ago. So this doesn't have anything to do, and y'all know I'm very direct, doesn't have anything to do with whatever kind of relationship I have with the mayor, or whatever the case may be, because me and myself, y'all know me, even me and the mayor, we've had disagreements. So, you know, it doesn't have anything to do with that. So I just want everyone to know that this has been discussed so long ago by myself and Councilor Box, and I know Councilor Box just got on the council, but I just want to make it clear, and if anyone have any questions, they're more than welcome to give me a call, or come to me and ask me anything, all right? So whatever the comment was out there, like I say, I don't read Facebook, but it gets back to me. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me. Everybody knows where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I do not have any follow-up questions on old business, item number one. As far as item under new business, Councilwoman Quayle, I believe you asked to have that item withdrawn?
Yes, I did.
Okay, perfect. Do you care to speak on that, or do you just want to go ahead and withdraw it?
What I did was, I had several questions from our city attorney in trying, because there's been confusion, and a lot of it's been terminology, and a lot of it has been how we are set up. It is not your water system is, that's incorporated or unincorporated, and legal counsel Danielson provided a lot of clarity on that, and I'm very grateful for that. And so with that, this would not fall under that realm, so this is why it's being withdrawn.
Perfect. And just, counsel, legal counsel, with clarity of that being withdrawn, that was titled R43. It was back on the agenda because it was numbered incorrectly when it was voted on, so that's why it's here tonight. I'm assuming we need to go ahead and renumber the two following resolutions?
I would recommend leaving it the way it is, and just note it as being withdrawn.
Fair enough. Thank you very much. I appreciate that perspective. All right. Item number two under new business, Resolution 2021-R44. Counsel, I know we've done this one before, this would be a toll for time on the Siesta Motel and the demolition of it. I know previously, we did this for 30 days, I believe that expires on Friday. So when this comes up, we're going to need a timeframe. If we want to go ahead and discuss that at this time, we can, because we're going to need, we're going to need a timeframe when this is put on the floor. So that being said, Councilman London, any feedback from you on this, sir?
Yes, one question. Do we have another update from them on this property?
We can call on the property owner here momentarily.
We'll do that later.
Okay, absolutely. All right. And Councilwoman Quayle?
The only concerns I have is this property continues to be an eyesore for our community. We continue to get complaints from our business owners, and this has been going on for three years now, and that's one of the reasons that I would like us to move forward. I'm willing to work on perhaps a 30-day, but I mean, it's like, this deal falls through, and so, oh, well, now we have another, we have another one that's interested in the business. Well, there's no problem with demolishing the property, bulldozing it, and putting it up for sale. The city's not letting the property owner know that they're not going to be able to sell their property. The city is saying it needs to, you need to demolish it, which is what this council passed a resolution on, and you're free to sell the property once you do that. We need to think of our residents, our business owners, and it is an eyesore, and something needs to be done with it. So those are my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Box?
I would echo everything Councilwoman Quayle said, and add a couple of things to it. At this point in time, it appears completely unsafe, because it's still broken into quite often. There's still vagrants or challenged, homed people still trying to live there, that could be a criminal element or several things. I guess, a question, if we're going to have the owner speak, I would like to know, are the owners making, are they maintaining some type of liability insurance on the structure? If not, what is the city's liability, should someone get hurt or be injured in there? That would be more for Ms. Danielson. And then second, if we, if we just move forward, instead of tolling time again and again, if we just move forward and go ahead and debate the thing ourselves, file a lien against the property, and then the owners can sell it, pay the city back, isn't that a better business decision for us than just continuing to delay and delay and delay, hoping that something's going to happen? So those are just some comments. I'm open to have those questions answered, and try to formulate a more educated opinion, because as I told everybody, I'm very new at the political game. Thank you.
Understood, sir. Thank you. Councilman Wilson, any comments on this one?
Yeah, I echo the sentiments of Councilor Box. That's all I have to say.
Copy that. All right. Thank you very much, and I have no questions at this time regarding this particular item. Item number three, 2021-R45, declares that certain public property is not needed for public or municipal purposes, coming from Chief Wiggins. Any questions on this one, Councilman London?
No, sir. No question.
Okay. Councilwoman Quayle?
Got them all answered. Thank you.
Fantastic. Councilman Box?
No questions at all. In fact, I guess you're approaching to see if we can do anything on consent?
That would, I would love that. I just wanted to, real quick, see if we had any comments first. Councilman Wilson?
No, no comments.
All right, perfect. And then myself, I have no comments on item number three for new business. So that being said, obviously, under old business, that's an ordinance, so we have to take that through the process. Item number one was withdrawn. I would like to go ahead and see a vote on item number two, and then item number three, let's go ahead, and I'm curious to see if there is anyone that could put that on consent. Councilman London, how do you feel about that?
On item two?
On the one that Chief Wiggins brought forward?
Oh, yes, I'm good with that one.
You're good with the consent on that?
Yes, yes.
And, Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Box?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
You wanted to speak, do you have any follow-up comments?
I thought you was going to mention item number two. We was going to hear from the...
Oh, we will, yeah. When we approve the agenda, we'll definitely take that into account. So are you good with item number three under new business on consent?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm good with that as well. All right. So at this point, looking to see if someone can go ahead and approve this agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda under old business, item number one under new business, to withdraw this particular item under new business, and item number three, that will be under consent.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Just for the consent purpose, roll call on item number three under new business for Chief Wiggins. Councilman London?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Perfect. And myself, yes. So we confirm that item number three is on consent. Thank y'all very much for that. Now we find ourselves for looking for any public comments on agenda items only. So these would be comments on the items that we just went through deliberation on. We have, as a rule for housekeeping, I'll be enforcing a two-minute timer on that, but when you come up to speak, understand there is a form in the back that we need to collect some information on. We've got a brand-new city clerk, she doesn't know everybody like Mr. Pennington and some of the previous ones did, so what we need on that form is names and addresses. So that being said, we'll go ahead and accept those comments for agenda items only.
... at the hand of our new city clerk, and welcome. Thank you for being here. Just a quick comment on number one. I have not heard anything compelling to support passing this particular item. There have been comments, but nothing that supports it. A $9 million project with a new city clerk, a very competent department head, that will not put an additional burden, and anyone that ran for office this year knew what the compensation was before they went into office. And then on the Siesta Motel, based on the estimate that the CDA received when they tried to buy the property, with $300,000 potential minimum for asbestos abatement, and over 700 code violations identified, there is no way that that place can be renovated or reused without being torn to the ground. Anybody who thinks otherwise is doing pipe drinks, or if we let them do a half-job trying to get it ready. Because you cannot abate that much asbestos, you cannot compensate for that many code violations in an existing structure. Again, that's my only comments, and I'm Stephen Moreno there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Public comments on agenda items?
Yes, number two. I'm Eric Johnson. I've spoken to you, this is the third time, on behalf of the owners of the Siesta Motel. Last month, we had a presentation by persons who wanted to buy the motel and redo it. It's a substantial project that they're doing. They will basically strip it down to the structure and redo it. They were not approved. It was a three-to-two vote, because you didn't approve the apartment, you wanted some retail there. They have gone back to their lender to get approval, to put retail in their plans, and they've just gotten approval this week. Otherwise, I think they would have been here tonight to make another presentation to you and gotten on the agenda. But these things take time, but they do have that approval, and they plan to come back. And even if they don't meet your approval, we still plan to sell and develop this property. And you can't say that the property is not worth anything. This contract is $1.3 million. If there's anyone here tonight that wants to buy it for that much, we'd be glad to sell it and do with it what you want to. But we want to develop the property in a way that you will approve, and you know that we cannot approve it without your approval, and you know that the building will have to be inspected by your inspectors and approved. So there's not going to be anything put there that's going to be bad for the city. Everything will be done according to the requirements of the city. It is insured. We've kept it insured this entire time. We've tried to keep the grass cut, and tried to, we've got security that goes by periodically and checks. We can't afford to have someone there 24/7. And so we're doing everything we reasonably can to protect the property and move the property. We have two agents who are actively marketing the property. We have backup contracts if this one doesn't go through. So we are doing all that we can to get this done. But 30 days will not be enough time for us to get all of this to materialize, to bring back to you. Maybe these present buyers will come back by then, that's what I expect. But what if you don't approve it? Do we have to go through this process again and again? I want to assure you that we're not delaying. We've had contracts beginning within about four months after Mr. and Ms. Co. were murdered on the property, and we followed each one of those contracts, and for different reasons, the people could not get their financing and could not go through with it. We've not delayed. We have attempted to sell this property and move it. We don't want the property. We want to be rid of it.
I want to stop you for just a second, sir. Your two minutes is up, but I know that there are some questions from our council members here, so I would like to see if we could transition into some Q and A, just for respect of everybody's time. Councilman London, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Can you start, Ian?
Okay. Councilman Wilson, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Yes, sir. You mentioned that commercial development was in the plans, is in their plans now.
Yes.
Is commercial along with residential a part of it?
I have not seen it. I expect that part of it would be residential, because of the nature of the structure of the building.
So we're talking about mixed use?
A mixed use, yes. And we've consulted with some city officials on that, on the possibility of trying to work that out.
Okay.
But we, I mean, they are the buyers. I'm not their lawyer, I don't do, you know, their work for them, but I'm trying to encourage them to get this done as quickly as possible.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, sir. Councilman Box?
Pretty much, Councilman Wilson asked my question about the mixed use, but if there's not an increase to the, well, I'll just keep that comment. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Quayle?
Have the property owners done an environmental study and a building inspection study of the structure to determine whether or not it would be feasible for an interested buyer?
Before you answer that question, you've been asked online to speak up through the microphone, if you could be cognizant of that. I didn't mean to interrupt. Please, y'all.
Right.
Because...
We don't have formal studies. Studies have been done by those who are interested in buying it.
Right. Right. And that's, that's why I'm asking, because that, that would be easier for, if you had this information readily available, the buyer would know, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be going, well, we got this party, but they've got a contingency, and it's based on the study and, and so on. Because that really determines how much you're going to offer for a property. If you need to demolish it, you need to take that into account.
I don't think they would have offered 1.3 million dollars to buy it if they'd have not...
They admitted that they had not done that type of study, sir.
That, they've done preliminary studies?
They admitted that they had not gone to the extent of determining whether there was asbestos, whether the structure, they'd be able to do the structure the way they were hoping to do it. They said they, they were not going to do that yet because they first needed the rezoning. And so that's the reason I'm asking the question. If you were able to provide them with this information, it'd be a lot easier to sell it.
That's not the way the system works. The, the sellers do not do the feasibility studies for the project. They put the property up for sale, and people come and make offers. They do preliminary...
Right. They make the offer based on contingencies.
The, you know, the major contingency is zoning. If it cannot be rezoned, they're, they're not going to spend the money to do it. You have to have the cart before the horse or ba- or vice versa. You've got to do it the right way. They're not going to spend $200,000, $300,000 doing studies and then not have the zoning. So they need to come in and present it to you in theory, and then say, "We can do this." And then they do their due diligence. And then if it works out, then they do it. If it doesn't, then they have an escape clause in the contract.
Right. First, write a refusal.
All contracts are that way. So, I mean, we have, the city did the asbestos study three years ago, I think. And so we know that that asbestos study was done, and we know there's asbestos. But the buyers are the ones who are going to spend the money to do the project, not the sellers. But we're doing all this...
Right. And what I'm saying is, they will look at that based on how much it's going to cost them to remove it, to demolish it, whatever. Because then they're going to have to build from the ground up if they have to demolish it. And so they take these things into account when they, when they're going to offer you a certain amount of money.
Well, they did. I mean, there is a contingency clause in there for their due diligence. It's always in these kinds of contracts, and it gives them the escape if they determine that they cannot do it. But before they spend that money, which is very expensive, they need to know if they can have the zoning to do what they want to do. And, and they're diligently doing that in good faith.
Are you satisfied with the answer? Councilman McQuarrie?
Yes, somewhat.
Okay. Do you have any other questions on a different path?
That's it. That's the main one.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilman London?
Yes, uh, just a couple of questions. And I can ask this from our attorney and mayor. Maybe you can, can help me out with this. It doesn't matter if the property is sold or not, does the abatement goes with it, or does that counsel it if this, if this property gets sold?
If it were sold, it would still be going forward under the abatement.
Right.
Correct.
So if the new owners doesn't do anything with it, we still can go forward with the abatement, no matter what the zoning is?
That is correct. But your abatement would come before they could transfer property ownership.
Okay. Okay. Uh, uh, second question, mayor. This may be mayor, maybe, uh, you Frank also. Uh, how much would it cost the city to demo that property if we're to, we were to abate it, abate it?
Um, I can't remember exactly what it was when the CDA did a, I want to say Phase One study to be able to determine the environmental issues that was along with the building. But I'm thinking it would be anywhere between 250,000 to 300,000 dollars.
Just to, just to tear it down?
Well, that's just to be able to deal with the, uh, asbestos part of it.
Right.
But I don't remember exactly what was their, um, direct amount. Uh, Councilwoman McQuarrie, do you remember what that, that amount was?
Um, those varied, um, because there were some things that Public Works could do, uh, and there were others where you would have to have the professionals come in. So it varied depending on separating it to what the city's own department could do, and then have some professionals come in.
Do you, can you give us a kind of a ballpark figure on that? We got the 250,000.
Honestly, I don't remember.
It would be very, it would be very expensive.
Very expensive. Yes.
Don't remember.
And so if we, if we tear it down, just say 700 grand, where's that money's going to come from? Would our citizen, would our citizen be happy?
That's where, that's where you'd put a lien on the property.
Let me finish. Can I finish? Would our citizen be happy with us spending, spending taxpayers' dollars, you always hear that, at 700,000 dollars to tear a property down? And, and the second thing, this is a comment, I, I don't really think someone who, who's in the business to, to do business, like these guys or anybody, would spend 1.3 million dollars on a property that they cannot use. So that's a little confusing to me. And I'm not in that profession, uh, not in that business, but I hear asbestos. But if we tear it down, that's a price on our city, on us, uh, to do it, to do that. And where's that money's going to come from? That's, 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 you don't have to answer that. That's just a comment.
That is, that would be true, because you would have to pay for it up, upfront, and then you would place a lien on it. And then when they did sell, you know, you could re- recover that, or you could also, um, you know, elect to, to levy upon that property to collect the lien.
Right.
Councilman Box, you were kind of raising your hand there.
That would be a question that led along to it. It's a, do you have an approximation on what the timeframe would be of once the levy is placed upon the property? Uh, if the property doesn't sell, or when the, uh, you know, if, if the sale is postponed or continues to not sell, at what point in time can the city exercise its levy and collect some of that money back? Uh, there's got to be a timeframe that it can happen, other than just waiting it, you know, indefinitely for it to sell.
I would need to look at that under the, the law, just to be sure. I would think it would be, you know, within a relatively short period of time.
Having worked with some demolition companies myself quite, quite often, uh, demolition of a building that's 75 by 100, just about five years ago, was 8,500 dollars. Now, that didn't, that wasn't the abatement. That was just taking it down and taking it to the slab. So the city would have to look at what our codes and ordinance are for leaving a slab, because this was leaving the slab on two buildings of approximately the same size as one or two of those buildings are. So, uh, to answer the question on recouping the money, the city will get the money back. It would just be a matter of time that it would come back. That's, isn't that accurate, Ms. Danielson?
Yes, that's accurate.
All right. Thank you so much.
One more, one more comment. What's the, uh, you want, sir?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. Good dialogue.
Thank you. That's great. Uh, what's the legalities of it as far as we try to go on abatement? Is, uh, can they take us to court in order to put a hold on demolin- demolishing that, that property? That's my question.
Yes. Their appeal time runs on Friday. And so basically, if you were to choose to, um, to not go forward with this resolution granting additional, you know, time to them, then at, at that point, they would have to de- determine by Friday whether or not they would file an, an, an appeal to this, to which that would go into the judicial system. And then it would be subject to the court's, court's calendar.
Bring us, bring us another question. Good job. Good. Appreciate it. So, uh, I think, this is, this is me, because we, I've experienced this kind of deal with Grant's Mill, uh, property, which we, we've experienced this already. And we heard, tear it down, tear it down, tear it down, you know, and if you tear it down, or leave it like it is, leave it like it is, then you get what you get. Uh, but I think we have to have some citizen. We, we say, we, we all agree. We all agree that we need to do something with the property. We all, we all agree with that. But if we got some folks that's going to spend 1.3 million dollars to redo it, and it's not going to cost City of Irondale anything, zero, zero dollars, I think we need to take that into account. And 30 days is not that big a deal, because this is the most talk that we've had. I've been on council for eight years, and I'm going to tell you, Councilman, this is the most talk we had about this building since I've been on council. And I'm excited about it, because I think now we really can see someone trying to do something with the property. You know, we had the, the plan on board for departments that failed. But now what they're saying, they're trying to give us both. And I think that's what the citizen, uh, uh, would like better. If you can have retail and commercial on the bottom, I think the citizen would really look good. Because that's, that's all over Birmingham, any city you go to, and that's in the downtown area. So, which is great property. So, just, this is one council talking, one council talking, and I'm as weak, I'm as weak as one council, but I'm as strong with council doing the right thing together. If we got some folks that wants to spend 1.3 million dollars or more with this property, then I, I just think that we need to give them an opportunity and just, just see what happens. I mean, come on. I mean, it's been a lot of years. What's 30 days? What's 60? What's 90 days? You know, to see if this goes through, then we can always, or always abate it.
So, uh, Councilman London, you're the first one who's mentioned time, a timeframe. Um, this, um, this resolution is going to be voted on tonight. Um, do you, uh, it's going to need a timeframe associated with it. Are you making a recommendation of a specific sort?
I mean, I, I'm, I'm good to every 30 days come back and visit us. I, I, you know, I don't have no issue with coming back every 30 days to see, uh, you know. I just, I just gotta, I just gotta respond agreeing, I'm sorry, you gotta respond agreeing to what you just said, that, yes, they have been approved, and they're going to come back and, uh, and propose it. And I think our citizens need to see what they have on the table. Need to have an opportunity to see what they have. You may like it, I don't know. But if you tear it down, and it's, it's good for the city, and that's what we want to do, was, we want to do what's best for the city, not for Councilman London. We want to do what's best for the city. And I think we need to give them an opportunity to bring the plans back if they're approved, and take a look at it. If you don't like it, hey, you just don't like it. That's what happened last time. I mean, there's nothing wrong with looking at it and taking a look and saying, "We don't like it." I, I think I'm, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, sir.
Only, only comment I have on that is, you mentioned mixed use, but that mixed use includes apartments. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it probably is.
Our citizens were very clear on that. They did not want apartments.
I'm going to interject here for just a moment. Obviously, if, um, the resolution will go its, its, its way, um, if, if the toll of time is granted, I imagine that a, a new set or an idea will be brought forward that we'll be able to deliberate on, uh, further. There's no reason to get into hypotheticals at this point, since you yourself don't really know the details of what they're considering at this point. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
They will come back with their plans, and, and to address Councilman London's first question, if they come back with plans and they, and you approve their plans, then we would ask for the demolition order, then to be rescinded, so they could go forward with it. Uh, but as we said last time, if you go ahead with the demolition order, I mean, we want to work in good faith with you. But in my file, in my office, is a lawsuit ready to be filed. And we think that we have a very good lawsuit. 1.3 million dollars shows the value of the property, and we can prove that. And we've got several contracts for that amount or more. And so we, we don't want to do that, but we want to work with you in good faith.
I appreciate that.
And we'll come back as necessary. I enjoy seeing you.
Sir, I would like to, I would like to say that the city has been trying to work in good faith with, with the owners of that property.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll come back to you in just a second. Councilman Box?
Just had...
A question for myself, um, directed towards our legal, is you've already, John asked a question. That was on my mind. Um, he, you know, you guys, you guys talked about the next step, that if we did move forward with demolition, what their recourse could most likely be. And he just clearly demonstrated his intent. Uh, since that would have to go into the court process, based on your knowledge of our local court load, um, what, obviously, I know our court systems are still working on a pandemic type of schedule. Uh, if this was to be submitted on Friday, how long do you anticipate that this could possibly be tied up before? And I know if that's a speculative question, I'm just asking for some approximate.
I would think the earliest would be a year to 18 months.
Okay.
Just to take it all the way through the entire process.
So from what you're saying, is if we move through, um, with this plan for demolition, okay, and we do not grant the toll for time, he does what he's already stated that he would do. And I'm stating this more for the crowd, because I've seen some things on Facebook, and I just want you to understand, everybody to understand, the implications of this decision, okay?
There goes that Facebook stuff.
So, I, it's, hey, I don't read it as much as I used to, but it's still out there, all right? And I can't help myself sometimes. Um, so the implication of our decisions are tonight, is if we move forward with the demolition, he will do what he's stated, and then this property could be tangled up in court as stated by our counsel, um, our legal counsel, who's familiar with our local court system, within easily, at the shortest estimate, you're saying possibly a year, right? And that means that building continues to sit there as it goes through the process, and we can't touch it regardless of our demolition order. Is that correct?
That would be correct, because it would be stayed by the court.
Okay.
And, and you will retain control of the process if, if there is not an appeal.
Understood. And to elaborate on what she's saying, is if we do extend a toll for time, that gives the property owners and their legal counsel an opportunity to find someone, uh, to possibly purchase this, bring plans forward that we might possibly be able to approve, and then thereby sell that, see that property sold, and then further developed well beyond that 12-month process. So I just want everybody to know, those are the implications of the decisions we're making. I've had a lot of people ask me about this, and I just want people to know the deciding factors. So that being said...
I would like to make one more comment to you, sir, and that is that we are off, also taking into account our business community. They are asking us to do something. They are struggling with the homeless people. They're going onto their properties, and we, they are important to us. They are very important to us. And we will take everything that they've said into account as well. It's not that we don't want to work with you, but we have business owners that are having to deal with, with what's going on at the Siesta Motel property. And if you are a business owner, you wouldn't like it either.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, McQuarrie. Uh, Councilman Box?
Yeah, I'm just basically dovetailing into Councilman McQuarrie. What, and I don't know, once again, this would be for April, and yourself as an attorney, sir, but could we not get the owners to put up some type of at least temporary fencing to, I mean, you said you had security that comes by intermittently. I'm sure our police officers patrol it, but could we not say, "Okay, we'll give you X amount of toll time," but owners of the property, put some temporary construction fencing? They do that at events all the time. It, it's stuff like, at least another deterrent to make it harder for people to break in there, camp out there, and then go break into the businesses next door. Yes, that's the owner having to spend a little more money. But once again, a- as opposed to doing something that shows our citizens that, that we're trying to move forward on this, I understand what you're saying, Council President Spivey, that, uh, you know, we're, we could possibly have a lawsuit and then have the building sitting there in perpetuity till it can work its way through the legal system.
Good word.
But, uh, that's what I would like to see, to actually toll more time, is the owners step up and say, "Okay, look, since this has been declared a public nuisance and a public hazard, we're going to at least try to protect the public here moving forward, since your intent is to file a suit. If we do continue the abatement order, be proactive with it. We, we toll a little more time for you. You put up some type of fence that protects the public from vagrants running around through there, or at least discourages them more, or put a 24-hour security guard there. Let, let's see if we can do something a little bit more. Let's let both ha- both hands kind of work together." Just my opinion. Thank you, sir.
I just want to kind of...
Do you have a response to that, sir?
Thank, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And we really need to finalize this, guys, so we can move on.
I just want to make this, and I, and I agree with, uh, Councilman Quaylor. Uh, I am thinking about, and I'm going to make this clear, I am thinking about our businesses when we talk about this place. I'm not, I'm, I'm talking about them. I'm talking about people who eat barbecue, people who buy gas, people who need their car fixed next door. Uh, we're going to use A4 lumber, our businesses. We're going to use the paint store, our business. We're going to get the appliances from, uh, American Appliance, that, our businesses. So I'm think, I am thinking about our businesses when this project is going forward, not me. I, you know, if we, if we, if they're buying all of that from our businesses, guess what? That's tax dollars for our citizen.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you very much for your time. Uh, I really appreciate your feedback. All right. So just for housekeeping also, this gentleman was directing, uh, was, um, was, um, representing the seller. Therefore, we wanted to give him some more time and ask some clarifying questions. I'll still be enforcing the two-minute rule on everybody else. All right. This is for agenda items only. Yes, ma'am?
Um, good evening. I want to speak about old business, the ordinance to raise the water superintendent's pay. Um, I don't feel like it's, I feel like it's too much money too soon. I feel like it should be done in increments, just like with any other, like financially responsible business. They would not give an increase of this much, considering how many capital projects we have going on, and like the water system, from my understanding, from what y'all said... from what y'all said, was just in the red two years ago. So, I don't think that's financially responsible to give an increase of that much. Maybe 5,000 this year, maybe 5,000 the next year, but I don't think it's financially responsible to do that. The second thing, I don't care what y'all do with the Siesta, I just want something done, because it is an eyesore, and it is a nuisance property in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Should she get her information? Should she give it to you? Okay, perfect. All right, any other, all right? Good evening. You got hers already? All right.
I got a lower, more. Sharon Graham, and since I was not for the raise for the mayor's salary in the water department, I was really interested in the handout that you gave the water board two weeks ago. It was titled Water and Sewage Superintendents. And so, I got a copy and looked at it and immediately saw where most of the cities had 40-hour-a-week superintendents. So, I thought, maybe I can learn something from this, or I missed something. So, I got on the city websites, ended up talking to the city clerk in Pell City, the mayor of Riverside, water superintendent himself in Alex City. And all of these places, the mayor is not, doesn't have a title in their water department, and they're all 40-hour-a-week water superintendents. So, I think our title of superintendent is very different from the titles of superintendents that were on that handout. And I guess what I learned from that was, either we need to leave the mayor's salary as it is, or hiring for a 40-hour-a-week job in the water department. So, anyway, I'm just sad, though, to think that, I think this is just a ploy to raise the mayor's salary by using the water department.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
This is on the water department raise, and as I spoke last week, I was against it. And I was disappointed, and I left the meeting with one thing on the agenda last week. And then y'all came back around and tried to run this thing back through after the agenda had been set and everything had gone down. And this just seems like a runaround way to do this through a backdoor. We gave the employees a 2% raise. Now, you're talking about after 100 days of service, where we were promised that we could do this for this much money. And now, we're gonna give them 150% raise. I don't think that's right. Three of the people on this council were involved in dropping that salary last year. Now, all of a sudden, we're gonna try to raise it back up within just a few thousand dollars of where it was before. And I don't think that, that that's the way that, that we should be treated. We were promised certain things, and here it is 100 days. We're going to give 150% raise after 100 days. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's what we were told during the campaign and during the process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Let me just comment. I did not vote for the law that raised last year. I wasn't the one that voted for that. I was against it, so I wanted to make sure we correct that statement that you just made. I was against lowering the raise, but we understand why he lowered it, and we'll talk about that later. Because I don't even, no, no, we'll talk about that later.
Point of order, I do not want to get into politics from previous administrations.
I didn't vote for it, I didn't vote for it.
There's three of you on here that were voting.
I didn't, I did not vote for that. Go back and look at the records. I know.
Three people that are on this council were involved in that vote, for a clarification. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I'm shocked that you abstained.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
No.
All right, let's keep this orderly, guys, let's keep this orderly. Councilman Box, you had your hand up?
Yes, please, thank you. When everybody's kind of finished, I just want to speak to something, because I want to make sure I understand now. We're not talking about the mayor's salary in this, we're talking about the water board superintendent's salary. Whether it's a backdoor thing, or a frontdoor thing, or any of those things, legally, it states that it has, it is two separate issues. Am I correct in that, Ms. Danielson?
That is correct.
Now, as far as lowering the mayor's salary previously, whether that was done for a political move, or whether it was done, as I think it was done, to try to help the city's finances, which, which was a good idea, the fact of the matter is, the city is in better financial shape. Are we in good enough financial shape to, you know, give away the world? No. We've still got to be fiduciarily responsible. But I, I still see it as two separate issues, and that's, that's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Wilson, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Since we are accepting comments, obviously, from this, this item, Councilwoman Quayle, to be fair, do you have a comment regarding this?
No, I've heard from my constituents and...
Okay. Thank you very much.
No comments.
Any other public comments for agenda items only?
You have done a great job tonight. This dialogue has been great. Thank you so much, Lord. So, agenda...
Do you mind speaking into your mic?
Agenda item one. There's some questions I have, and I understand we're talking about the superintendent, and the law refers to it as the municipal utility system, and here we're just talking about the water system. And legally, there's no specific hours per week required to hold this title. So, my concern would be, what activities are written into the capital improvements project that requires supervisor time above and beyond the normal typical work week? Is the person that you are wanting to put in this position qualified to supervise the capital improvement projects? What is the timeline for the projects? If the project hasn't started, why would you pay money now if the project hasn't even started yet? And I would assume the projects have compact little sections, and you want to accomplish certain things at a certain time. And if more time is required, then what's the hourly pay for that particular extra time? And is it necessary to execute and complete the projects? And also, these capital improvements that are going to be put forth, was money allocated for this extra time when you approved the budget for the capital improvement? I'm new to this, too, but I sure want to see us be fiscally responsible and not spend money if we don't have to.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you for letting me ask my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, again. I heard the figure 100 days, and I guess my comment is, you know, I, I'm not sure the length of time that the current water superintendent has been in office, what relevance that has to the question of whether or not the current rate is appropriate. I think a more relevant and compelling number is 25 years, and that's how long it's been since this rate has been adjusted. And that is going to have an impact on not only the current water superintendent, but all future water superintendents that we would hope to recruit to maintain the high quality of our water service. Thank you.
Sir, if you could pass your name and address to this fine young lady. All right? While he's doing that, do we have any other public comments on agenda items only? Seeing no hands? Moving on. Oh, sorry. I've looked at it. Okay, cool. So, we have no comments from our streaming services. I'm reading that right. Okay, cool. All right, thank you very much, Chief McDaniel, I appreciate that. All right, so we've closed out public comments on agenda items only. That being said, would someone please bring forth ordinance 2021-10? We've already taken that through the process, so we can go ahead and just do a standard vote like we would for a resolution, since we've already gone through this two-step process two weeks ago. So, if someone would like to introduce that motion to the floor.
I make a motion that ordinance number 2021-10 be approved.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman London? Yes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quayle?
No.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's a four one, so that motion passes. All right. Item number two on the agenda, resolution 2021-R44, that agrees to extend the time of appeal for demolition order by the city council on the Siesta Motel. Would someone bring that forward and then add the timeline that they're proposing at the end of that, at that item?
I make a motion that resolution 2021-R-44 agrees to extend time for appeal of demolition order by the city council on the Siesta Motel for 30 days.
Okay. We have a motion for item number two with the clause being for 30 days. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman London?
Yes.
Councilwoman Quayle?
Yes.
Councilman Box?
Yes, with a strong caveat to please put a fence around it.
Copy. Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And then myself, yes. So, that's five up on that, so that motion passes. Item number three was on consent, so that's automatically passing. Now that we've deliberated and voted on our agenda items, we find ourselves looking for any public comments to the council on non-agenda items. Once again, if you would be nice enough to state your name and address for the record.
She already has it.
Okay, perfect. You know who, which one she was?
Fearman.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here again, related to a abatement issue. 2305 First Avenue South. Apparently, the city of Arundel keeps making mistakes legally, and we can't get this done. So, the first mistake was in the wording, the second mistake has been in the time limit. And I would just like to see it moved forward. I don't know what we need to do to get that done. I am saddened by the continued state and having to attend these meetings every two weeks, but I will be here every two weeks until this is done. So, I don't know who wants to speak to the issue, or whatever, but I'm gonna be here until it's done.
Legal?
It was my understanding that the fire marshal came by and he, he spoke to you and actually notified you of that, and that you said that that was fine, so that that would not be an issue.
He didn't ask for my, since I was notified, that is a difference.
Well, I, I can only tell you what I was, was told, and there weren't any mistakes made, and so we needed to wait out that particular time. As I said prior, I was not, I, I had not spoken to him at the last city council, council meeting, because he was out and was, was, was ill. And so, I gave you the, the best information that I had is of that particular point, when I, I spoke to him after that, that particular, particular meeting. And I did let him know you were there, that is why he came to, to talk to you, so that you would not have to come back every, every time, so that you would be aware of the actual process that was going forward.
I just want to keep it in everybody's mind that I will be here every two weeks. So, I don't mind coming. I feel like it's the price I have to pay. But as far as notifying me, if that was consent, I'd like any legal consent to be in writing. So, if you're gonna notify me of something, notify me in writing, if, if you're gonna hold that to the consent level.
Well, there is no consent that actually needs to be given to you that was a courtesy. The reason that he came by was to let you know that, so...
Okay. Well, you don't have to send him by the house, I'm gonna be here until it's abated.
We have Chief McDaniel that would like to speak, maybe possibly give you a reply on that.
I would just like for it to be on the record, we're not, we're not trying to delay this or take this any further. Chief Dawes was out sick, and I don't know how many of y'all know Chief Dawes, but for him to be off work, not doing anything, says a lot, because he works and does a lot even when he is sick. So, that, there wasn't a mistake, it was the person that does it was sick and couldn't be here. He wanted it to be in there, and trust me, when he realized after he came back that it was past the date and he wasn't here, he was probably just as upset. So, he just went by to let her know what had happened, not that the city forgot, not that we were looking for consent for anything, it was more of, here's what's going on, we just want to keep you in the loop. So, that's, that's what the, the visit was about. It was more of us just reaching out and say, hey, here's what's going on, here's what's happened, this is why it's not moving forward now, but it was just, Chief Dawes was out sick for, for over a week. So, just to kind of let you guys know and for that to be on the record, it wasn't a mistake, it's just, he wasn't here to do it.
Thank you for that, chief. And legal, based on where we are in the process, when do you think this could first come up for a consideration by the council?
As, as Chief, Chief Dawes said, it would be June 16th meeting, and that was what he went by to let her know.
Okay, so the second meeting in June is when this will be up for consideration. Yes, ma'am? Any other comments for non-agenda items?
Yeah, I, I have one question in reference to the, the lady's comment.
One second, Ms. Danielson.
So, Mayor, or April, we can't get it on the agenda before the 16th? Can we? Does it have to be that long?
There's a, there was a 60-day window.
60, okay.
So, that's why it's stretched out to June the 16th, because that's when that 60-day window ends.
Okay. I thought it was 30, but, okay, thank you.
So, I, I have one commentary, and, and once again, this is from a businessman. Who, who's our second in charge to make sure it doesn't fall through the crack again? Or can, can we do that? Can we bring it to the council?
I know, since it's in my district, I'll take personal ownership to see that it's, because I know I talked to, to Ms. Danielson about that today and asked her where we were. The, the question I asked her was just simply for the public's benefit.
Very good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is definitely on everybody's point of...
Stephen Moreno, again, just a quick comment. It would be nice to get an update, we have about 60-something roads that were on the 12-year plan to be addressed this year. I haven't seen any activity, it'd be nice to get an update on that, since we're so many months into the fiscal year and calendar year. And secondly, are we paying someone to do our website? At least the one I called up, still, it shows current information on the mayor and city council. It still shows Charles Desmond as our city inspector, and if you try to make a comment under the contact section, you can't do anything, because it shows Alabama as the city. So, you can't send any comment in from the website. If you'll take a look at it, you'll see what I'm talking about, I verified it tonight, again, before I came. But again, mayor's things, y'all's things, they're up to date, there are other names that aren't, somebody needs to take a look at it.
Noted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, in response to that, Mayor Stewart, can we get an update on our, these 60 roads that he mentioned, the pavement plan? Can we get an update from where we are on that?
Well, first of all, I don't know anything about 60 roads, per se.
Well, if you look at our 12-year pavement plan, those, those roads are shown.
Can you let me get through?
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate if you let me finish my comments, because we talked about accelerating the plan, not going along with the current plan. So, if we accelerate the plan, we're gonna do more than the 60 that was outlined on the pavement deal. Therefore, I just pray that God bless everybody, and I will give you a report in the month of June.
And possibly incorporate any sidewalks or storm?
Yes. Storm, storm drains, sidewalks, and roads.
Thank you, sir, we look forward to that.
Okay, just for clarity...
One moment, one moment.
Will it be the first, the first time that we meet as council in June?
I said it would be the month of June.
Thank you. Councilman Box?
I did, I mean, you know, it's, it's probably not much, but I was looking over the expense report, and we spent some money for Mid-South paving and for another paving company, so we're evidently doing something. On the expense report, it doesn't give you an actual breakdown, but if we're moving forward, that's a good thing.
Perfect.
That's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Any question, any other comments on non-agenda items at this time?
I, I have one, just...
Is it regarding that project?
No, I'm, I'm gonna ask the mayor, if you don't mind, could we have someone look into No, I'm, I'm gonna ask the mayor, if you don't mind, could we have someone look into the Beacon Park, the walkway?
Frank will, will do it. Yeah, Frank will do it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir?
Charles Thorings. I'd like to bring to your attention our post office, our weeds overgrown, holes in the driveway, and weeds growing around there everywhere. If someone from City Hall could speak maybe to the postmaster general, and maybe get them to sort of clean up a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments on non-agenda items this evening? All right. At that time, since we have no more comments, and we have no comments from the virtual side, I would accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a fantastic night.